Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to the April fourteenth, twenty twenty five City Council Work Session. Would I ask that you please silence all electronic devices? You can notice our agenda is it's grown inside over our last couple of work sessions. So in an effort to try to get us out here and under our work class, we asked that you expedite things really, really well as we keep for the time. And we'll roll right into item A, Community Development Home Program update with Michael Blair and Steve RC, the fucking Max, uh, good afternoon, or council members. Um, Michael Blair and my traditional counsel. And this is just going to be a quick, quick update on the home program. Um, all right, this is the map of the home program consortium that's funded as approved. Like blocking and casual, Alaman's Davidson and, um, Rand, yeah, it's a blocking and casual, Alaman's, Randwell and Davidson. Um, you know, basically, we were notified, as you all know, like in late November twenty, you know, twenty twenty four, that the home consortium had been finally approved by HUD. And that the first year was actually this current year that we're in right now, unfunded. Okay, which remember that, um, that's important. Um, so the first, and the first year to receive funding would be up by twenty five, twenty six, which would be, uh, July first, uh, basically grant funding year. Um, we've gotten, uh, HUD technical assistance to actually modify the Burlington, the CDBG stuff and IDIS that actually includes the home. And that's been a challenge, but we actually got that done. Um, basically amendments, uh, can be made now to the plan, which originally was not able to do. Um, and then basically in February, each member of the consortium was asked to appoint two representatives and several leaders have some consortium board orders that's responsible for approving consortium final laws, recommending adoption of consolidated plan amendment, electing officers, and approving twenty five, twenty six home activities, generalized activities for funding should we get the funding. Um, the first meeting was April tenth last week here. Um, we had a forum. Um, everybody was all those areas were represented in that forum. We, um, and actually we had, uh, City South there. Um, so we were represented, three of Burlington was representative, we have a county that's working too. Um, we elected a chair and vice chair. We approved five laws, and then we went through and approved the idea of twenty five, twenty six home funding. So recommended funding for twenty five, twenty six. This number you see up there was an estimate done last year. We didn't get that funding last year, but that's what it would have been in twenty twenty four, that or somewhere near there. Um, ten percent admin to ten homeowner rehabilitation program, none over thousand, that would work in conjunction with the weatherization program we have in all these counties with ESAR program we have in these counties, and the CDBG program that you have here in the city. Um, and then affordable housing RFP, um, for new or rehabilitated, uh, rental housing, including community housing development organizations, which is a CODO. That's required in the home program. You're supposed to qualify a CODO, then try to fund that CODO for habit, habitats can serve that purpose on a regular basis. Um, that's going to be around a million. Those numbers could change. So if it's just plots that would be put into activities, should we get funding? Um, the CDBG annual plan, and this is, um, this was added on just for your information, because everything's moving kind of fast right now. We're not going to find out what the allocations are until May fourteenth, and possibly before that onset, but May fourteenth was what they said you will know by May fourteen. Um, so we've basically got to anticipate funding. They said base your funding off of twenty twenty four allocation. So we, that's the twenty twenty four allocation from last year, ten percent admin, fifteen percent public services, rehabilitation. We're basically doing heavy into rehabilitation so we can catch up on our spending. We've had a lot of projects that were long-term projects, large infrastructure projects at that time, for shipping things to rehabilitation, which we can get the money out there a lot faster, help people with their homes, and, uh, catch up basically, which we've been kind of trying to do that for the last three years. Um, relocation assistance, that works with rehabilitation program, infrastructure nonprofits, uh, that, that we have a couple of applications for that too. And so you've got that total hundred, we have a hundred thousand estimate program income, and the estimate is we think we'll receive around a hundred thousand dollars in old loans and those needs off of rehab and other projects that can make payments on a regular basis to the city. That's where that comes from. And I'm going quickly, just because you have that whole agenda, but if there are any questions about the new home consortium or why I kept mentioning twenty twenty four. The CDBG monies, if we're not, if we're not sure, we've done this in the past, but we had to just amend what we approved. Yes, if it comes in late, I'm assuming they'll be the same. Same process as the period you're saying. And by version these together, so that you now have access to all of them, if, if some funding on the HUD side does not materialize, it doesn't have any impact on CDBG? Nothing. What'll happen, and the reason I mentioned twenty twenty four, is if they go back and say in twenty twenty four, you receive four hundred, four hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars in CDBG, you receive zero in home, then what that means is probably once our federal government goes through a full budget process and the home program is still there, it would fund that amount for the next year, uh, twenty six, twenty seven. Um, we are trying to lobby to get HUD to include what it would have received in twenty twenty four. If that happens, then boom, the consortium is up and running. If not, we've got all the work, we're in the plan to point aboard. So if it does get funded later in the year, let's say for the new fiscal year twenty twenty six, and all of a sudden get word of that, then we've got the amendment done, got the plan approved, and we're good to go. So that's really where we're moving forward is if we're going to receive the funding. So would it be possible to have, potentially have two funding cycles in one? Is that what you're saying? Okay, so no. Just be from the three. Yeah, okay. They would just say you have two unfunded years of the five year plan?
And that was the email that I sent to you, uh, from, uh, Michael Warcom with the chair of the new home consortium, uh, to help us lobby our, our federal delegation on that. Yeah.
They, they said they'd do whatever we could. So I put together a letter that explained what I just explained to you, um, that they'll send to their federal representatives that they have relationships with. Okay. Any other questions? If we don't hear by May fourteen, maybe without partner, we could be funding it. What HUD said is you will hear by May fourteen or earlier. That's said, it may be, may not be the fourteen, though it may be May twenty. I, I think things are in flux right now. Um, I've asked the HUD office in Greensboro what did it heard, and they said basically nothing. So that's, that's a state office. Um, so that, that's kind of where we are with that. That's what we know what they've said is May fourteen. But if that changes, it could change. But that's what we're gonna do. That's the best we can. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Mike? Thank you all for having me. Appreciate you being with us. Next item read is linked transit services. This time we'll recognize Mike Dunn, Director of Transportation. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I've put together a pretty lengthy agenda for probably more than I normally do, but there's a lot of details in there. This is, uh, about our linked transit operations and maintenance contract. This will actually be the third time we've gone through a contract that you, unless you're seeing, as you seem to be practical, we'll likely have a new contractor this time. Uh, this is for our operations and maintenance. Um, and I'll summarize and certainly I'll give you the questions that you have. Uh, we released it in December, closing in in January. We had five submissions. We asked others, other communities to help us review these. We had Park involved. We had Raleigh and Winston-Salem involved, all those down in the town system as well. Uh, our main focus, uh, with any type of operations is going to be your experience and personnel. We've learned heavily over the last nine years. Our bus drivers are our best selling point, are our best helpers. Uh, and then how you take care of the city vehicles is right up there at the top as well. So, so a lot of the maintenance and personnel, which this company provided, the corporate support as well, but it just really looked down to how they handle the personnel. The drivers in this proposal, I believe, are going to be at twenty one dollars an hour, and supervisor will be at twenty three dollars an hour. Uh, there is an increase in the contract from twenty twenty two. Uh, remember, we're working under a three-year contract with two one-year options if we feel like we want to do that. So we basically developed a contract since twenty twenty two, which has locked us in a pretty good rate. Uh, we've been doing increases since then. Uh, we're looking at a twenty percent increase for this new contract. Um, we did do an FTA required market analysis, fair market value, make sure that it wasn't too high, it wasn't too low. Uh, and that did come back approved. So we checked the market rate price on that, and the firm is We Drive You, uh, similar colors to what Link had, but sort of We Drive You, it's about a seven hundred page submitter. Um, that scored highly out of the five that were submitted. This is a little bit about them. I mentioned their people, uh, their approach to, to hiring and operating, their corporate support, uh, safety, customer service. Uh, we felt, you know, as all companies project these during the proposing process, we felt like We Drive You put together the best package, uh, answered the questions, uh, the best, and by us the most experienced as far as what they're doing in other communities. Uh, that's really what we're with as well. We call them several communities, uh, that we give them. I mentioned in summary, it's a three-year contract upon approval. We are able with this company to begin, uh, if you were to approve this tomorrow night, we'd ask for real consent. If you, uh, do that, they can begin the transition. As you can imagine, bringing in a new company, we're gonna have the same moving parts and pieces, but we're gonna have new faces and new company and corporate to come in and transition, possibly some personnel, learn our equipment, make sure our equipment is up to speed when they take it over. It's a big responsibility for a new company coming in. Um, we are down, uh, actually, the information you have is over three million. We've worked since the last two and a half weeks to bring it out to two point eight million a year, and we do believe we're gonna get a little bit more off of that. Um, but the way it's set up is we're not exceeding the amount of, I think it's fifteen seven over five years. Uh, but we feel confident we possibly can get to fifteen point one. Do they help me? Something that we redo? Well, oh, yeah, if we were to redo, yes, sir. If we went to full five years, that's what their proposal is. Correct. And then the major part of this is that our fifty three oh seven grant provides fifty percent of cost for this operating grant. And we have heard, um, just pop of nothing negative about funding on that being changed or lost. So we're confident sections of the federal level. And my current provider did not even care. They did not. Transit did not submit, nor did they submit in a couple of the North Carolina communities. And that is somewhat of a theme in the industry. They'll decide what areas sometimes they're gonna be in, what areas they're gonna be out of. Well, three years ago, they were the only ones that did something. Exactly. So, yeah. And other companies knew that, so they didn't submit as well. So I mean, it's that, it's sort of an industry wide. There's about five or six big players that do this. Um, and once they decide on the territories, it sort of flushes out Durham and Charlotte, have We Drive You as well as Park.
Yeah, probably Park. Yeah.
I'm glad to answer any questions. Uh, like I said, if we ask that the government consent tomorrow evening and allow, once it's final, allow legal finance approvals and allow city manager sign.
Well, the nature of FTA funding throughout our country is so thick and integrated in so many different ways. In some regards, all those things insulated some of the other governmental cuts we're seeing. But, um, worst case scenario, you would have this contract for three years. We didn't get funding. We would have to fund fifty three oh seven to match these ourselves. And then in three years, we're done, we can get out if there isn't a next place. Just sort of a doomsday experience, but that is, that would be the exit strategy if things change. Yeah. So, um, and, and like I said, it's such an integrated part of society, and I don't personally think anybody should really change.
I would agree.
It certainly has grown here in the past ten years. Yeah, thinking about that.
Not exactly. We'll be to that tenth year after June sixteen. We've got, uh, probably May to provide you with forty nine years this June. Um, so, yes, we've grown. So this is our third contract. We've been doing it this way. For those that haven't been around, we've been doing this to our service providers since we started in, in June two thousand and sixteen.
Any other questions from your mind from this side? So if you have questions, you just be in the decision. Just answer them, please. Yeah, so maybe do that. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next item, item C, is litter removal and cleanup efforts. At this time, you will recognize Amy Warner, our environmental coordinator. Good evening.
So I'll make this short, um, but it has been approximately a year since we've come together to discuss the litter issue in Burlington. Um, so I wanted to, um, come back to council and share the efforts that staff, um, has undergone for this past year. Um, again, I'll make it brief, uh, but we'll talk about our current efforts, upcoming efforts, um, proposed efforts, and then have discussion and answer any questions that you can have. Um, I will highlight every single one of these. You can, you know, read the slide, get an idea of what everyone has been doing. Um, but a couple I definitely want to highlight is, um, the additional staff that Public Works has hired. Uh, we have a full composition now dedicated to litter removal. Uh, and over the past year, he has picked up approximately five tons of garbage throughout the city, which is phenomenal, in my opinion. Um, his name's Michael Dawkins. He started in October of twenty twenty four. Um, we received a truck in December, um, dedicated to the litter effort. Um, Recreation and Parks, they continue their adopt a park, um, and cleanup requests and cleanup cleanup requests. Uh, Melissa Hooch hosts approximately twenty individuals a year, um, who dedicate their time to pick up trash. Um, Mass Media, we're continuing our, uh, partnership with Stormwater Smart. Um, so we have a mass media contract with them, and I'll talk about that in detail, uh, in just a second. And litter traps and streams, that's something that we don't have incorporated just yet, but we are trying to work with Harvard or Sibley to get some litter traps around the city. Um, and, you know, I think it provides an opportunity for residents to see, um, that we are trying to do something about the litter. Um, it also provides a volunteer opportunity for some residents to volunteer to help clean those out and maintain those as well. And our city litter page, I want to highlight that as well. Um, John and Morgan have spent a lot of time consolidating our litter efforts. So if, I don't know if you've noticed yet, but we do have a consolidated litter page that has all of the department's efforts on there. Um, and it will guide visitors to the appropriate apartment, um, site, so where they can either sign up for events or make a complaint, um, et cetera. I want to highlight some snapshots of some of our volunteers. Our F three men's group, um, it's like a workout group that we have in the city. Um, every time they have, they host a rucksack event. They are going downtown and picking up trash filming, and every time they do, they're reaching out and asking for our litter kits, um, and making sure some pictures and really promote our litter efforts for us. Um, you'll see that our, some residents in streams, some students that are volunteering. We had a Service Creek cleanup in twenty twenty four, where we picked up approximately two thousand pounds of trash out of Service Creek at North Park. Um, so this just highlights some of our, um, volunteer efforts that we host. And we also hosted our first, it was called Burlington Beats Litter at the time event in twenty twenty four. Um, we picked up one thousand one hundred eighty pounds of trash with this event and had over one hundred employees attend. Um, they devoted their time throughout the day to just come out and pick up trash at some, some of our hotspot locations that Gary helped, um, help me put together. And this year, we're gonna do the same thing, but, um, it's gonna be known as Keep Burlington Beautiful this year. Uh, I think we're gonna stick with that till again. So for our mass media outreach, at the same time, I'm not gonna show our advertisement, but we do have a video that is on YouTube. It's shown in, um, movie theaters, certain commercials. We have a radio advertisement, and it's, it's, um, to promote litter pickup and the prevention of litter. And these are just some of our numbers that we've had, um, over the past year, uh, for our mass media outreach. Some upcoming efforts. So we have Allaman's Creek Week, which, um, is a community, communities come together in Allaman's County to host various events. It may be trivia night at a restaurant. It may be a stream cleanup. Um, it may be like a stream day where people just come out and celebrate being near a stream. Um, but we do participate in that by having a little Allaman's Creek stream cleanup. Uh, we do that every year. We typically have around fifty to sixty volunteers come out during the little Allaman's Creek stream cleanup. So we'll be hosting that on May twenty fourth of this year. Um, we'll also have our Service Creek cleanup at North Park, um, in the fall. And that one's usually very successful as well. We typically have around a same fifty to sixty people show up for that. Um, we'll continue our private group cleanups. Those cleanups are really just groups that need some volunteer time, and they'll reach out to us, um, and Recreation and Parks for supplies, um, for us to, to provide those supplies so they can, um, go out and do their own cleanup. Um, on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, we will have our Keep Burlington Beautiful City Cleanup. So that is when staff come together again, um, to devote their time throughout the day from eight to noon, um, on that day and pick up trash. And then we will bring it all back to City Park in the Carousel Parking Lot, um, to showcase the efforts. Um, business cleanup program, this is something that Stormwater really wants to, to pull in the businesses and the community, um, to help promote some cleaner storefronts. Um, so we have a couple signed up, and, and what this entails is on the same day, um, they will go out, clean up their business properties and their storefronts, and, um, then the next, the next week, what Stormwater will go out, look at businesses, and choose a winner. Um, we have prizes to give away for them as well. And then we'll continue our litter pickup in our hotspot areas. Some proposed efforts, uh, that we want to come to you with is becoming part of Keep America Beautiful. Um, it's a nationwide nonprofit, uh, that is comprised of various communities and individuals. Um, we have a shared goal of keeping communities clean, um, and a shared belief that when you come together and try to tackle a problem such as litter, as big as litter, uh, that you can get more done. And then they also offer, um, annual community grants that we provide, um, to help with different litter programs. So obviously, some current local affiliates include Winston-Salem, Greensboro, High Point, and Charlotte. So we do have some neighboring communities that are a part of it, um, currently. So, any questions?
Let me just, go back to the very first slide, please.
This one?
Yeah, what is a litter trap look like?
So there's various models of the one that we are, and I tried to find a big picture of it, but I only found people building them. Um, it looks like an oversized basket, uh, wire basket, and then two white PVC pipes. So it doesn't have to be PVC, but that's just an example of what you use to keep it at the top. So it's almost like a skimmer on top of the stream, on top of the water. So it still allows wildlife passage, um, through the stream. So it's, you know, not a threat, not supposed to be a threat for wildlife. And what we do is, um, we kind of go on back and forth. Do we want to put it in an area that is visible so that people can see, you know, have a sign there just so they can see our effort, or we do a system that we want to hide? So, once we move forward with it, well, we can come back to council and get some direction on that. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Keep up the good work.
Does the city have, um, fix it, does it give you much for hotspot?
It really does. And that's actually when Gary was helping me put together a list. Um, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but that's where you got some of the streets is through the, the repeat, um, calls that we get through the case of broken. And I should have put that on there.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item D, Burlington Department Progress Report. This time we'll recognize our Police Chief Aladella. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, manage your handicap. Let me get this thing on. So, uh, like you heard previously from, uh, Fire Chief Lawrence, really just here to give you kind of an update on the department over the course of the last year. Uh, here with me tonight is Assistant Chief Josh Light on the left, who has responsibility for investigations, communications, hiring and training, a whole swath of other things. And on the right is Assistant Chief Nick Wright, who has responsibility for operations, which includes patrol, SROs, uh, virtual response unit, uh, and a number of other functions. Uh, because this is a high-level overview, uh, feel free to ask, ask questions as we move through. Really, to start out, the first thing I'd like to do is to just recognize, uh, the staff at the police department, because without them, none of the things that I'm gonna talk about are possible. Uh, these are people who are doing really difficult work every day. We're very, we're very lucky in the city to have such a dedicated group of people. Uh, and the police department, it's about two hundred and fifty people who keep the city safe. We owe them our deepest thanks. And part of the recognition over the course of the last year was that the police department was recognized as the law enforcement agency of the year in North Carolina. Uh, that nomination really consisted of recognition of the progressive police practices that the police department's had in place, and a pursuit of constant improvement at all times and always, so that the public is receiving the best possible police service. As we move through the presentation, I'm really gonna, uh, keep it at these four high-level components, uh, which you can see before you. But I don't want to lose track of the fact that the, the work that's being done each day within each one of these is extremely complex, sometimes dangerous, and it's always high stakes. But these are really the things that drive the organization forward every day. So department staffing, this is a, a really good place to be in. Our department's been fully staffed throughout twenty fourteen or near fully staffed. Uh, we've been able to sustain over eighty-five percent deployable officers for more than six We've been able to sustain over 85% deployable officers for more than six months. And a deployable officer is a really important component of modern policing because it's somebody who can actually go out and answer a 911 call by themselves. They've been fully trained, they're fully certified, they're not in the pipeline. As a result of that, we've been able to create some specialized units to address some community priorities. Things that you individually or collectively brought up and that we've heard from the public directly, both from their personal concerns that they have and then as we analyze all the data that comes in about what's happening and what's going wrong and what isn't. Also, the professional staff has been at a near full staffing throughout 2024 also. The majority of vacancies are in telecommunications, that's been a consistent theme for several years, partially because it's just the largest group of staff, of professional staff in the police department with around 20. It's also a very, very demanding job, right? You are on the line, on the mound with a call where a really bad thing is happening to somebody and you're getting the resources there to help them. So on the left, you'll see our current staffing, 146 of 152 sworn positions filled, 46 of 49 professional staff positions filled. There's a number of part-time employees who handle a variety of other roles. And I also don't list the volunteers here. We probably have in excess of 15 or 20 who work in the police department every week doing really important stuff. As we transition to this period of at or near full staffing, where we really find ourselves focused is on staff development, unit cohesion of the groups that are responsible for doing the things, working effectively together. And in an organizational culture that focuses on maximum retention. The replacement timeline, timeline for a police officer or professional staff number is extremely long. And we want to keep everybody who's qualified and doing well on the team for the duration. The number one priority for the police department is always effective emergency response. That starts with Burlington Central Communications, who's dispatching for Burlington Police, Burlington Fire, Grand Police and Grand Fire. Over 100,000 calls per year. I'll tell you that they are an exceptional group of people who do an amazing job. Literally in the past year, they have saved lives, they facilitated multiple arrests and apprehensions, and done everything they can to keep everybody safe. You also see the virtual response unit, disability crash investigators, the Burlington Motors Assistance Program, which is comprised of volunteers. Those are really multiple ways that we do policing differently in Burlington. Providing professional staff members who are really well-trained, very talented, and highly efficient on the front end of a 911, or right, right after the completion of a 911 call. So the public gets the service that they need and so that we can keep the officers focused on the things that only officers can do. That's been really important as we've transitioned to a time of staffing shortage to having close to, or at full staffing. And then these police officers, they are an amazing group who are constantly getting the correct outcomes in really tense situations. It's the application of the training that they received, good policies, procedures, and supervision that we all know are required. But really it's the application of training in high-risk incidents. Multiple throughout the, the last year with armed suspects, very few uses of force. And one other thing that is important to get to this group also is an increasing number of cases for our special victims unit. So crimes against children, domestic violence, and the elderly, these are not things that are easily visible on a 911 call or something like that, but these are very, very serious crimes with very, very vulnerable victims, and there's a lot of them. And detectives in particular who are on the backend who have this really specialized set of training are doing amazing work in this area every single day. To make sure that we continue to get the emergency response correct, we're highly focused on training and staff development. I mentioned that is previously, and that is the theme throughout. What we know is that our, like other law enforcement agencies in the country, the patrol staff in particular has gotten younger over the last 10 years. They're a young but very talented group of people that are thirsty for knowledge and they're thirsty to make sure that they go out and do, do things the correct way. We as an organization are consistently investing in them so that they've got the right skills as quickly as possible to be successful. It's really a form of insurance against bad outcomes in the community. The other thing that you see here is a focus on the fundamental, instructing on the fundamentals of policing. Sports analogy here is really important, right? Even the highest level professional athletes, Warren McElroy from there to the weekend winning the Masters, he's still going to practice the fundamentals of his golf swing, he's still going to practice the fundamentals of putting to make sure that when he goes out and performs, he gets it correct. And we're doing the same thing with the police officers to make sure that we're reinforcing the fundamentals so that when they go out and they, and they perform, that they get it correct. The next component, the prevention of harm, it's really a more comprehensive way to think about proactive policing. So when I talk about harm, I'm, I'm talking about victimization from crime, somebody being a victim of an overdose, somebody getting hit in a car crash, run over, hurt, that sort of thing. And doing all the things that police officers can do to prevent that from happening before we get to those really bad outcomes. So certainly in patrol, we've implemented evidence-based policing practices to prevent harm. And that's involved direct partnerships with property owners and residences and residents to address crime and safety issues in their community. When people call us and they need help with things, it's our duty and responsibility to deal with it absolutely as fast and as quickly and as effectively as we can. A little bit more about the new units to address many of those concerns from the public. The downtown community officer, a council priority for many years. We've been able, because staffing has gone up, to have one officer whose job is solely working downtown. They work every day with the businesses, with the library, with the other public spaces to make sure that it's, remains safe and to make sure that we deal with any kind of disorder issues as quickly as we can. That's been highly effective and it means that those turnarounds for those complaints can go really quickly. Next one is opioid and violent crime. As we look at when bad things happen to people in Burlington, one of the things that both across the country and locally has been highly impactful is the fentanyl epidemic, right, the opioid epidemic. We've had years where there have been 20 or more people who have had fatal overdoses in the city, and that's unacceptable, right? We know that there are people who are selling those drugs to those people, who are taking advantage of them for their own profit and gain. So this is a group of people who focuses on fentanyl dealers in particular, those who supply drugs and overdoses. And then also people who have an overlap between violent crime and selling drugs. Especially at the street level, that's a very dangerous intersection and it's commonplace that we've seen multiple homicides and multiple shootings take place over the years we see. So this group focuses on that. You'll see on the right, a portion of the successes over the last year, both from that group and other strategies from the police department. We've seen our biggest yearly reduction in overdoses since 2017, including a five-month, it's really more than five months now, period of no fatal overdoses in the city. And I'll tell you, that's not limited, it's not totally because of the police department's response. Public health has a, a great responsibility for those improvements as well. But you can't, you can't sell fentanyl in the city and not get investigated, right? We will, we will do everything we possibly can to find people accountable. And that really means less deaths, less terrible things happening to families. The next piece is the DWI, this being new, only, only possible because of increased staffing. As we went back and evaluated our crashes, the circumstances, especially around fatalities, we know that impaired driving is a significant contributor to those. These two officers, since January 1st of this year, have made, it's now over 57 DWI arrests because they made at least one earlier weekend that I may have mentioned in a minute. One of those officers has made more DWI arrests this year than any other law enforcement agent officer in the county. And this continues to be the right investment for the city to get these impaired drivers off the streets before they crash into somebody or hurt somebody. And of course, here in the building, you'll see a member of our traffic unit, Officer Elliott, who maybe you know. The increase in staffing and the focus on, on making sure that our roadways are safe has been a high priority and it remains. We see thousands more traffic stops per year as a result of the increase in staffing. And these are only focused on dangerous and impaired driving, right? If you're speeding in the city, you've got a pretty good chance of getting a meeting a Burlington police officer. The next piece is, the city's continued investment in juvenile diversion. So we don't want to always be focused on someone who's gone through the criminal justice system through about times that they're carrying illegal firearms and involved in shootings. We would much prefer to deal with a young juvenile who's made a couple mistakes because of their age, maybe some underlying mental health issues that they need some counseling around. And so we continue to have a very active juvenile diversion program that's before the juvenile justice system. In this case, over the last year, 146 juveniles have entered that program with a 93% success rate. 93% of the time, we've never heard from them again after they completed the program. That's exactly what we want with all these kids, you know, just back into.
What period of time does that?
We continue to track them.
Okay.
Definitely. So it would be anybody for 2024, we have, we've only seen the 7% of them come up again. And it could be two weeks later, it could be six months, but we do continue to track them.
So explain that program in detail, juvenile diversion.
So the most common would be, you know, there's, one of the ones that I think of is a business owner finds a kid spraying paint in his building. He knows that the kid lives three spots down because he sees, you know, he sees him playing outside all the time. Business owner calls the police department, hey, I got somebody spraying paint in my building. Officer comes over, deals with the kid, hey, where do you live? All right, I live over here with my dad. All right, let's get in touch with your dad. Well, he's at work. All right, dad comes home, right? What you end up with is a responsible adult who just had some time where their child was unsupervised and made a bad choice. That child doesn't need to go to the juvenile justice system through a formal petition, right? What they really need is to come into the police department and go through an evaluation with our case manager, get access to different services, potentially attend, attend team court so that they have some experience of what the court system could look like for them in the future. It's an opportunity for a little bit more time to be spent with the child before they go down the path of going to the juvenile system, which does not have the best outcomes overall.
So with, that's our youth diversion program, our YDP. So what would be a maximum offense that we would put somebody through? If we catch a young person with a stolen weapon, do they go through YDP? Do they go through the Department of Juvenile Justice?
If it's a felony, it's going to involve juvenile justice, possession of stolen firearms.
And that's a little bit of a gap on that end from the statewide level, not necessarily our local, those that we deal with locally, but as I understand it through a scoring system of what constitutes even those type of activities. Maybe it's a second or third or fourth chance before there's enough resources allocated to go ahead and put that, that young person through the juvenile system.
You're correct.
Is that continuing, is that a continual?
It is. The state has the right resources in place, they just don't have enough of them. And there are some triggering thresholds related to some of the intake stuff that probably needs some enhancement. Possession of firearms by juveniles being one of the highest and most concerning circumstances. I know that this past week, CIT detained a juvenile again for possession of an illegal firearm. This was stolen, who had been released for possession of an illegal firearm and was also monitoring for juvenile justice, right? Just back into the same environment, committing the same offense. That pattern is very problematic. Certainly on our side, we work very actively with juvenile justice to make sure that they have the full picture of what's going on. And juvenile justice does take all of these very seriously, really focused on limiting violent crime in particular amongst this group.
Well, that, that is a continuous issue and it's not just in the city of Burlington, it is statewide. I, I see it in other municipalities that have really higher rates even of what we see here. But that answers my question because I was really concerned that our YDP may sort of blur that line a little bit. And what you're saying is it's pretty clean.
Correct, yes, sir.
Good. What percentage of that would be repetitive for those kids, juveniles, I think?
I think because we've been in the juvenile diversion program for a long time, that 7%, we'll probably see it again.
Seven?
Yeah. That's a, that's been pretty consistent the last few years as we continue to track. So, you know, keep in mind, these can be, you know, 12-year-old like this who's always had a spray painting thing, you know, a very minor offense for a very young child. But typically when they can't follow through with the program, or maybe they do complete the program, but we see them again in a couple of months, there's other family systemic issues that are happening that are in play that contribute, that contributes to them continuing down that path.
Is Yolanda the only person still working in that department that she has held down?
Correct. Yolanda's going to be a full-time person. We almost always have an intern, usually a college level for Yolanda. Chief Wright and I actually turned her on last Thursday, it's her last day, she's now in the hiring process to be a police conduct, which is great as a police officer. But we try to supplement with, you know, very talented young folks that are interested in that.
Please let her know that we appreciate her.
Absolutely, we'll do. So this is a new component. So one of the things that happened over the last year is that we finished a multi-year build-out of a real-time crime center at Police Act Works. Maybe if you saw a preview of that a few years ago. This being the Aero Reconnaissance and Tactical Intelligence Center, URTIC for short. This is where all the cameras, the drones, licensed plate readers, and the other technology come into one space so that it enhances the emergency response and advances investigations. This is where drones and first responders, which you've heard about. So this would be the first year that we really talked about drones and first responders as a program. So the first six months led to 16 apprehensions of people who were running from the, from the police that otherwise would not have been captured. Earlier this year, it was solely responsible for saving the life of an eight-year-old man with dementia who had fallen into a creek after having been missing for a group of, and almost certainly would have frozen to death. It is a really critical component to not only the police response in the city, but also to the fire response. And that's been a very effective partnership to make sure that the fire department has the information that they need as they get to deal with really difficult and dangerous things, both on the interstate and across the city. URTIC also has a crime analyst assigned to it so that we make sure that we're using data effectively to deal with crime trends and hopefully that we can get in front of them. It also has a sergeant who works specifically intelligence. That being keeping all elements of the police department informed about what's going on. We all know that every, every bigger organization that communicates is going to challenge. This is one person who does, that's their job. And what they do is, they really act as a, a part of the, the engine that continues to spin the wheel of productivity so that 24/7, 365, the right type of work is being done across the city. Lastly, kind of these, in this big victory overview, it's reassuring and engaging to communicate. It is the department's responsibility to maintain the trust of the public. We certainly believe that the department is judged on its efficiency and effectiveness and that we also must foster positive interactions outside of emergency circumstances. All of these being things that we have to be committed to. Internally, we are very focused on how do we treat people, how do we do our jobs, and what do we tell everyone after the job is done? They deserve to know what happened with their 911 call, as an example. So it starts with our expectation of each other and our expectations is that we treat everybody the same way we want our family to be treated. We treat the neighborhoods the same way that we want our own neighborhoods to be treated. And when we talk about those things and consistently reinforce that, what we get is very compassionate, empathetic, very driven police officers and professional staff members when they go out to provide public safety. And that's really where all of this falls down to. In amongst making sure that we're efficient and that we effectively deal with the complaints. Over the course of the last year, we've also received our 11th consecutive Kalia accreditation. Just over 40 years of accreditation, letting law enforcement and communications to make sure that we're at the forefront of public safety across the country. And those were flawless reviews this year. We held over 200 community meetings with thousands of attendees. The Crime Stoppers Program received again another set of state-level awards. You see Master Police Officer Bobby Davis down here with the blue shirt. You see Master Police Officer Bobby Davis down here with Blue Shirt. He won the regional award, a multi-state award this year. That program continues to benefit not only the city of Burlington, but also agencies across Alman's County. And we have very tight and expanding partnerships with HOAs, businesses and apartment managers so that we make sure that we're dealing with root cause issues in many of these places. And I'll say in this space also, a critical component for me continues to be the community police advisory team. We met last Thursday. We need to give them information, for them to give me guidance and advice. And that continues to be a very beneficial component that the council has done, so. So our forward vision really is that we do have a strong team, continues to get stronger, especially as we retain talented staff. We will continue to train and develop everybody and to proactively address the community needs. Community complaints, dangerous travel, everything else, as the list goes on. And the pledge, of course, now moving forward, just like always, is we will evolve consistently and continue to get better. And then lastly, I'm sure there'll be questions about this one. With the young workforce, it is really important to continue to do things that are interesting and different. And this is a branding component for ARTIC so that we create some pride inside the organization and highlight them for their effectiveness. But, you know, this just being a metaphorical composition of the staff members that also stands as, you know, kind of mascots per se. The eagle is drone, that's the drone, the fox is the intel analyst, and then the polar bear as the police officers. Had to answer any questions that you may have.
Good information, any other questions?
Great presentation.
Your numbers are all good, ten staff is amazing.
That's absolutely number one.
I can't, I don't like to compare southern cities, but it's got to be really, really strong in terms of comparisons.
I was talking to an elected official in another city. If you didn't track it, but anyway, we were talking about police, we hate them. We hate them. Because we've taken some folks from them. Obviously, they're still struggling a little bit and we're maybe getting our feet in the puddles. And so that's a testament to what you guys all are driven with. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's on the agenda item E. Go bonds, get options discussion. Thank you, Richard. That's all, so welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here, Council. This is to talk about our geo-bonds. On November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, the voters approved two bonds. A recreation bond in the amount of forty-seven million, street sidewalks and streetscape bonds in the amount of twenty-one million. For the street sidewalks and streetscape bonds, those are pretty much, we pay until, before we do sidewalks, until we run out of money. Citizen information that was put out by the city of Burlington said that we would spend fifteen million on streets, one and a half million on sidewalks, and five million on streetscape. Currently going before, as it stands up right now, is that there will be sixteen and a half million issued for streets, or fifteen for streets and one and a half for sidewalks. And Bob Patterson will be a little bit later giving a report on the most recent street study. So that one is fairly simple and straightforward. We pay until the money runs out. Next, we have the recreation bonds, which was forty-seven million. Information that was put out by the city about these bonds is six million was attributed to the Mac pool, eleven million to the Paramount Theater, and thirty million for the sports place, for a total of forty-seven million. Current to date, we have received bid prices in for the pool and the Paramount. And as you can see up there, the pool bids came in at twelve million, basically doubled. And those bids are valid through May twenty-fourth of this year. And the Paramount Theater came in at fourteen point six million, and those are about three and a half million more. Those bids are good through May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
We do have some grant money, we'll talk to that for the Paramount, but is that correct or not?
I think it was already spent on design. You've already spent all the five hundred thousand dollar allocation from the state on design, but I think your four hundred and sixty cent of the rural was for the renovation moment. But that's for, I don't think it's.
So we got half million for all potential purposes in the city. Do we have, do we have any other money reserved for that project?
So we are currently scheduled to sell bonds on April twenty-ninth. We have had our ratings and we've accepted the ratings of bids and moods. And those ratings are good for ninety days. Before we sell, the LGC, the local government commission, actually sells the bonds for us and on that date of April twenty-ninth. And we will need to send out this week two potential buyers of the bonds, a preliminary official statement, POS for short. So we will need counsel to direct staff into what direction they would like us to go. There are many options available. We can just do the pool, or we could just do the Paramount Theater, or we could do neither and go forward with just selling the bonds on the streets. Staff would like direction from counsel about how you would like us to proceed. There is another sale date on May thirteenth, which means counsel would have to have a special call meeting before April twenty-ninth. If they want to, if you want some more time to discuss, to decide on how much, how many bonds we will actually sell.
So ultimately, we've got seven years to deploy this plan.
Yes, sir.
And the pressure of decision-making is predicated upon bids that came in with a hard deadline of May twenty-fourth, May twenty-sixth.
Yes, sir.
What we do know is that the streets and sidewalks have no bids, there is no hard deadline. It is paid as you go and it's already formulated, which I think we're going to see later. Even if there was already a financial mechanism in play for the overages of what those projects are, I would struggle making a financial decision under pressure for a project that was double what was originally estimated. And I don't know how anybody feels about that, but I want to be clear about my feelings, that's double. And we, in good faith, went to the community and said, this is what we're going to spend. So I think in good faith, we've got to be stewards of that decision-making process and work with staff on what alternative financing might look like. If we chose to split it up and use some of our money for something. And I want to be real clear personally, I don't want to steal the show here, but I want to be real clear personally. I would not vote to spend a penny of the money on one project at the expense of another because that's not what I told the public we were going to do. So I think we got to look at this thing comprehensively and make good decisions. And I probably weigh in on that too much, but in my world, the streets and the sidewalk trees, we'd go ahead and do that, but I think we should work as a unit and collaborate with city staff on how to proceed with those other projects.
Is it feasible to think that we could rebid?
You'd have to.
We would have to rebid. The concern that we have is, we've, I think Fred has asked about extension, if we could get an extension on the bid, and they will not commit at this time for either project. So the concern is also, if we can't, if we change the scope of the project is one thing, but if we go out with the same scope, the concern is it's going to be much more than what the current bids are.
You're talking about using two, you're talking like we're pulling.
Yes, sir.
Well, the scope is the only thing you can deal with then. In terms of, that's pretty hard numbers. And unfortunately, inflation is probably going to get higher. And you got to study and determine what you're willing to, what changes you need to make to stay within these boundaries. Now, the other question is, is there additional money out there that you could, you know, with this additional money out there, which we're on this year? I'm just saying that's, that's that's a real tough question to guide in terms of, we've got some hard decisions to be made there.
So we know there's no additional money, right?
Correct.
Any other?
No additional monies.
Right now, yeah. That doesn't mean, would be later.
And I'm completely sold on the MAC. I feel based on the community and the responses I received during the whole voting with people trying to really figure out what was going to be fixed and where was the money going. The one thing that everybody really wanted was the MAC. They had to vote for two to get one. So I'm completely in agreement on the MAC pool.
I'd give two at six billion, I'll be honest.
I'd give two, I would prefer it.
Yeah, but it, well, I mean, that's not, that's where we've got to bet through this thing, in my opinion. To see what, where were we all at that point? I've got a lot of questions about that.
And I think getting the bond together, we used a figure that we had from the original study of the MAC. It was probably about three years earlier. That we did not have true construction when we were going out because of the timing of the bonds, that we had to get something really in it quickly. So that was the only figure that we had.
And I think in looking at this and some other projects that we've touched upon, are we giving any thought from a staff level as to what the future of projects look like when we put them out and have an architect lay everything out versus the design build? Because I'm involved in commercial projects a lot and I've never seen this big of a variance in design ideas. And, but it seems like when you go out and have a project designed and then put it out to bid, it really inflates. Is, I would like to come back from staff at some point on the future of city initiative construction. Trying to have actual numbers, trying to have real figures, or close to.
I also think probably in regards to what Craig was saying, if you think back three years ago, we were just getting out of COVID and so contractors were hungry and we had some significant inflation in the past three years. So that's probably another reason that the costs have come down. And also with the terrorists not knowing what or when, I think the contractors of the tried to make sure they get all that.
Tariff impact, I think, is significant here with steel. I bid projects three years ago in my private life that I chose not to do because it was shocking to me three years ago how high they were. And I've put them back in the market now and they're not that much different. They didn't come down, but they're not that much different. So even if three years ago, I have not seen anything on the private side of what I do for a living that tells me that it's doubled. So that's why I say I just think we need to, the terrorists, I think steel is a big thing, big item with regards to what exposure can be because a builder, a developer, someone that's in that business, that's real money. And that's got to be a passion and there's got to be a cushion there to be sure that if my margin of error is off, I'm still cutting. And I think we're experiencing that with regards to construction projects, so. But not, we're not rushed. We need to make good prudent decisions based on, and they may end up at the same spot, but let's not, in my opinion, let's not be hasty. Let's do the sixteen and a half million and work on the suburbs.
I agree with that, Fred. I mean, I think we go ahead with the street fix-up, I think we can do that. I think we know where we are and we just spend it and don't have any more money like this and that. But on the other, I think we need to, you know, bottle more time, go a little more long, see how we proceed. I feel much more comfortable. And I agree with you, I think we need to rush in, rush into it, we need to bottle.
Our other question is the pool, which is how that projection basically doubled in terms of what was the design and did, I don't intentionally do anything wrong here, but did we not, did we see this coming at any one time with that kind of increase? And then you turn around and say, what do you think of these facilities, people who are going to utilize the money on most? I got to agree with you on one thing. That pool thing, you know, especially that indoor facility, that's a popular facility. And it's for a lot of people that can use year-round. I'm not sure it's twelve million dollars worth, but certainly I don't think it's something that's six million was.
Well, the question comes, where are you going to get the six million from?
Well, the question is, we got to look at all these plots to determine, look at our revenue, which one we would prioritize or not.
And is the twelve million dollar bid as good as it begins?
Yeah, that's a great point. And quite frankly, this design had to change in terms of modifying the potential expense on that facility or any of them without that. That's all thrillers that could certainly happen to.
And just to make sure, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, we had to bid the pool twice because we didn't get enough bids the first time. And the twelve million is the whole project. There were modifications bid that would reduce, you know, cutting things out would bring it down to eleven million instead of twelve. I'm just trying to make sure council has all the information.
Well, I think there was eighty-seven thousand to renovate the front and seven hundred and fifty thousand for the storage areas.
Yes.
So, yeah, I think we were all, you guys did a good job informing us of that. So what is our, where do we put items out to bid at? What is the process for that? Do we put them out on the state procurement website? Do we do it internally? How do we do that?
Yeah, so we kind of do all of the above. We put it out on the state website so that it's out publicly. I put together a personal list of contractors that I think were good matches and emailed them directly and had contacted them directly. We had good participation and a lot of interest at first. The biggest concern with the MAC, from the contractors, they're, they don't want to build over an existing pool. It's problematic for them, they can't get equipment in there. And so this is something that is a difficult project for them. And it was hard to get, a lot of really good contractors dropped out. They just didn't want to, didn't want to do it. So I don't know if you're going to get tremendous interest. There's a lot of, there's a lot of work out there, so they're not going for the difficult projects, what they both need. Did they comment about what, you know, Philino at that facility in terms of the impact of that existing deck when it went in and started construction? Or is the construction actually the way outside the deck is ascended now? The project, actually, the deck is not ADA accessible in lots of areas, so, and it's in bad shape. So if they're going to redo the deck. So if they're going to redo the deck, the, the pool deck, they're going to cut two foot outside the pool itself and then that whole deck is going to be redone. But it's probably going to be redone after they get the superstructure up and then they'll come in and do it because they'll, they'll damage it with equipment, set it with steel. So the reality is held public though is that you're keeping the, the, the pool itself, the concept of the pool.
Yeah.
The walls, the destruction, the deadwork. But the deadwork, you're basically going in and taking most of that deck out, which I'm not mistaken, when we built that, that's a pretty big expensive part of the pool, the deck. Yeah, it's, it's not huge. And in comparison, it's not, it's flat work, it's concrete. But what drives it to that, to that extent, to twelve million? I mean, I mean, my question is, where do we come, I mean, and this is, I'll take some of the length of this, but where do we come up with six million and now it's a twelve million? Wait.
Wait, as, as Craig said, they used older numbers and three years ago.
Even then, I, I would argue that it hasn't doubled in three years. I haven't seen it. Uh, maybe thirty percent, but not a hundred percent. But if you only have one bona fide bidder that's interested in dealing with the pool. Two, okay. Don't think they don't talk. I mean, don't think they're not in the same business. Then there's a premium being charged for that. My question would be, what would it cost to build an entire new pool? I mean, if it's twelve million to cover one, then think about that for just a second. So we just need to think through this and reassess this and see if there are, if we can use our creative efforts to try to figure out how to facilitate this. Can anybody land on this bottom?
Yes, um, well, it will be when it is possible, but, you know. I, I don't think they'll plan to open it because of the potential construction. Because the bids, you know, were, are good through MBA. That, that's really the rush that we've had on this is the hard bid date of, we just get through.
So, I mean, the point of it is, so will we be able to pull for how many years then?
Well, we had pulled last year as our pool.
I mean, but this, I mean, my point is, this situation is, is it is now. Are we not, can we not go in and open that pool up this summer?
If we do a total redesign and then we do not accept the bid, yes. You know, if that may be as the marriage of that, this may be something we look at as a design bid, you know.
We just need to explore options. I mean, we're talking about six minutes. In my world, that's the goldmine.
See, my point is, if, if the pool could be opened this summer, at some point in time, people are going to be kicked off. They can't, it's a whole time to build it. Especially for a couple of years, it's that, that's not going to go good, okay? Then my point is, if it'll be up, if you operate it this summer and, of course, this is maybe not, not feasible, but then you have your plans laid out to see where you're going to start construction if you could, and this may not be in terms of getting bids and so forth, you know, in early fall. And I don't know what proposed date for construction or something like this could be. Rachel, do you have any information on that when it came back?
On how long the construction was supposed to take? Um, they gave about a three years, sixty five days.
A year.
A year, a whole year. Now you have, have construction projects working when we actually mobilize. So maybe eighteen months is sort of what I have in my head.
We did take an alternate to see what it would be, what it would cost. If it was an eight month project and that was a two million dollar adder to get it to eight months. And that's the bona fide bid. I will tell you that the.
What if we get from three years? I like your man, I like where we're going.
And again, I'm looking at building a new whole thing for twelve million.
Our, our biggest concern again was the deadline for bids. We just wanted to make sure that, that they were still valid and, and if they became invalid, you know, there is a concern that the costs would go up. So that's really the only deadline that we have. You know, we're going to the buy market definitely for the streets and sidewalks.
And do you want to make that decision tonight or do you want two more weeks? And instead of selling them on April twenty ninth, have a special call meeting before April twenty ninth and just sell them on May thirteen?
I'll do whatever council wants to do, but you're not going to answer all my questions until it is.
I just think it's, it's.
Breakfast to the street and sidewalks?
No, street sidewalks.
That's what we're talking about.
I just want to be, I want to make sure I'm.
We're, we're just doing, we got to buy market for the streets and sidewalks now. We will lay the MAC and the paramount until we can kind of figure out what next steps are.
More discussion from council and break for the staff about your risk.
Yes, but the sixteen and a half million is, that's fine, that's a good spot, so. And the five million for street skates, I'm assuming is going to be, some of that's going to be timing with what we're doing downtown regardless, so.
Yes, sir. So that's there, yes, sir.
Well, Gary, you got it straight. Communication in terms of the water sewer pipe, you talked to a lot of property owners downtown and they've done a nice job with that. In terms of swimming would need to be done and in and out, the impacts on the businesses inside in terms of their, their lines and all, that, that will die.
They've concerted out here between Morgan and John and Paige and engineering.
And Paige's done a nice job too. She's really, then, it's kind of brought this together because that's, that's important.
So we will go forward on April twenty ninth, sixteen and a half million for street sidewalks.
Yep. Everybody do with that?
Yep.
Thank you. Our next item, item is city graduate board commission appointments. This time we have John Byrne, our phone information. Hello, John.
Hello. You have a, a couple of questions that you could consider today. Our current members of the Allen County Library Committee, both of our current members have, have designed the commission in the last, in the last year. So there are before you three, uh, four applications that have come into the calendar. There is one seat that would, if you appointed today, expire at the end of June and you'd have to go to appointment then. And there's another second appointment that expires in two thousand twenty six. We have started to advertise for this, for the June appointments and we have started to get in applications for that, including people who are interested in the library committee. I did not include them in this packet because they come in the last four days. So I just wanted to make you aware that there are more people who are interested in serving on the library committee, but that would be for a, a, a June appointment for this seat that expires in June. So for the Eastern Piedmont Home Consortium, uh, this is a new board and there are two seats up for that. One is expired since two thousand twenty seven, the other one in two thousand twenty eight. And then for the operating advisory board, it's a little complicated, but there is a, a seat designated to the Lehigh County State Extension Office, Allen County. And the current member has designed from that and the extension office put forth Mark Daniele, who's a former extension agent and now still works with the office as their representative on that board. But he's also serving on that board currently, so he, if you choose to appoint him to that seat, you will move from the specialist seat to the extension seat, opening up a specialist seat for you to appoint in June. I know that's complicated, but that can have needed. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer whatever I can.
So what is the process for specialist seat?
Specialist seats, we'll just advertise it for specialists. And a lot of times it's, it's existing members to reach out to other members. It's the newly formed reaching out to other landscape designers, other people who are arborists and, and that. And we just do a general call as well for people who are specialists.
Master gardeners could get and qualify them.
So if we move that person to an advertised seat, look for another specialist seat, seems like that would really strengthen it.
Which would, yeah.
I wouldn't be a fan of that.
Mark's a great guy, you know, he's a little, just a great guy.
Would everybody be in agreement for that?
Yeah.
Great. Our Daniele.
And then the others, will we, are, are certainly the library committee. Are you saying that we, we should, we're anticipating more, we have more than what you said this year?
We have, we have, so I did call for all of the appointments that are coming up in June, rather certain terms starting in July. And among those people that have to apply for the library committee, one of these appointments expires in June. So you have to either reappoint this person again, if you appoint someone today, you'd have to reappoint, to that seat, you'd have to reappoint them again in June, or you could appoint someone else. So, or you could not fill it right now, just fill the one that, that is, expires in two thousand twenty six.
Any feedback on one of the appointments that's been taken, taken?
I did not ask Zanna about that. I know one of them moved, but I think maybe they both.
So there are two seats available now, but potentially in June, once the third seat becomes available, it's three.
No, we only, we only have two seats, but one of the seats, so it's a partial term for one, both of these, it's a partial term. Actually, both of them are partial terms. So you're, when you appoint today, you're, you're filling both of them for a partial term. One of those partial terms expires in two months. So you can also wait to fill that term later.
I, I would say we wait to see how well, if we have to lump them all in.
The, the whole consortium we sort of need.
So I guess I'm, I thought we had some people that, did we not?
We, we ended up, we had three and so that's why we brought it back to, to city council for the two seats.
You have three people that applied.
Right.
Two seats, okay.
And those are the three listed on the back page.
Yeah, Patrick Mills is somebody that I've worked hard to get him engaged in because he's, he's got a lot of prior experience.
Also, if they, Patrick Mills and Teresa Wilden, they're my two.
Uh, I think before we had a couple of members that did not qualify under, who were not residents of the city apartment in terms of, that didn't apply for the home consortium.
I didn't receive those.
Yeah, so that's the reason why it's.
Who's the third person that's? You had Patrick, you had Teresa Wilden is the third person.
This is your pronoun. Thank you.
Well, I wouldn't be good with Patrick Mills and Teresa.
Teresa Wilden.
I'm good for that, yeah.
Do you have any preference for which term, the ones in two thousand twenty seven, the ones in two thousand twenty eight?
Patrick is the, the, the tax accountant.
He's a, yeah, he's an accountant, but he also has had the BHA. His, his, and his BHA, BHA term ends this year.
Put him in twenty eight, Teresa in twenty seven.
Yeah. That's two good people. That's, that's, that's good.
Do you want to wait for both of the Allen County Library appointments for?
I'd say we might as well wait, we have to put it twice here. So let's just do it once. Apparently them being shorthanded, that causes the issues, so nobody's called in. Thanks very much.
So, remember, we'll add these two for the home consortium, add a full consent tomorrow, if that's good with council.
That's good, thank you, gentlemen. I G, street resurfacing update. This time we'll recommend this Bob Patterson, our second director of water resources. I would always say to you, I think you're tearing streets up, not putting them back together. Do a little both, okay.
Thank you, Mayor Council. With me, David Bowman, our engineering department is going to carry the load of this presentation. We have annually done resurfacing for many, many years and we're going back to two thousand and six when we did the first bond and did a lot of work. We rely on failing condition survey and consultants scores the, the streets, rates of the streets. So David is going to talk about that and kind of give the overview on, on how we get to the streets that we select and give an overview on that. So I'll, I'll turn it over to David.
I understand that there was a template we were supposed to follow, so that's where part of this is coming from. And we're basically give you a brief history of street resurfacing, summary of pavement conditions and the funding sources and then open up the questions. City maintains nearly two hundred and forty six miles of paved streets and five miles of unpaved streets. With the approval of the bond, we now have fifteen million dollars to put toward streets and, and city parking lots. What we're looking to do is five million dollars a year for the next three years. Basically, the way that we, the pavement condition survey is done, we consult out the evaluations to, we've had several different consultants that do the job for us, but they, they go and ride each block of each street in town and give a numerical rating for those, those blocks. They look at things like alligator cracking, transverse cracking, raiding, raveling, different types of pavement distress and each of those has a different, a different rating or a different value and they come up with a rating on each street. The alligator cracking, it, it says there is low associated structural figure that takes place in one or more pavement layers. What it really is, is it's, it's a most serious type of pavement distress. It comes from either failing sub, subgrade or moisture getting in. Our subgrade here, in a lot of cases, is clay. So when moisture gets into clay, it shrinks and, and contracts. That causes, as you can see, it causes three different, I don't know if y'all can see that from there, but it causes three different severities of the, of distress. And, and what we do basically to fix that is we cut out, we got to be able to cut out the entire six inches of asphalt and patch it back before we can resurface. This is, uh, transverse cracking is actually one of the most common type of pavement distress. It, you can see that through the different pictures, the severity of it, but that can easily be repaired by just sometimes depending on how many, how bad or how severe it is, they can either mill the existing pavement and repave over it or in a lot of cases, we just pave over it without milling it. Our consultant goes and, and like I said, drives down each street, gives us a numerical number based on the severity of the, of the distress and the, the type of distress. You see with nine one to a hundred is very good, eighty one to ninety is good, so on. I just gave you three examples. The picture on the right is, is probably actually, I'd say it's actually in very good shape. So it may be a nine one, uh, medium cracking in the, in the middle and severe cracking on the right inside. And these are actually all, all city broncos streets, the pictures of them. And what we do on, on, based on, on the ratings, and I begin from the consultant, we'll go and put together of this, the streets that we need to resurface. We'll start at the lowest pavement condition rating and work our way up, generally work our way up until we run out of money. In some cases, if we, in some cases, we may stick an extra block in there because if one block is a sixty and the next block is seventy five and the next one's a sixty two, we'll go ahead and pay the seventy.
If we don't have these places, we
That would affect
We'll have to reject them.
That would affect wins, but it doesn't affect weight.
Right, right, right. Except, except for those extra eight or 10 streets that we might have to cut off.
The scoring
But that doesn't change what I'm gonna do. I want to be, I want everybody to be real clear about that. We may have to cut them off in that cycle.
Right, right.
We pick up in that cycle. They would be first in, last, last in, first out, so to speak.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can have it as, in other language, I say, I just, the concern in the past is, we didn't have a follow-up, we didn't have three years already
Allotted.
Already allotted for it, so we, we did it on a year-to-year basis, the big dollars, so we have had to cut streets out, but...
Is there any hope of getting, uh, the five miles worth of unpaid roads paid ever?
Well, now we have a petition to pay, uh, Henry, Henry Road down off the back end. Um, but, I don't know, I don't, I don't know. So, we've had, uh, previous, through the years, there's been discussions, I think, about paving the, the streets.
Right.
Uh, it's not a simple matter of just going out and what he asked all about. Each of them would need to be, um, graded and, and probably widen and have range improvements. Um, so we would need really to have a specific program aimed at, at paving those gravel or dirt streets they're called.
Are there also some discussions with the mayors about pitching in this way?
If, um, there's a, if there's a petition, um, process, then there would be an, also an assessment process, that's typically associated with that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Next item, actually, is you filled your requests. We have, uh, this is for those 2074 and 2076 Bridge Road. 442, 446, 450, MacArthur Lane, 2301, 2305, 2307, 2309, Pinecroft, and 2700 South MC, how many is that? This time we will hear from Jenny Ross. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I've lumped these in together in terms of the, the properties that are adjacent to each other. So, and, and you'll see kind of a theme, uh, for all the, um, almost all of them are residential requests, uh, for properties that are undergoing residential building permits, whether they be pending or, or, uh, issued. So the first two are off of, uh, Birch Bridge Road. They are in the white color here, um, just north of a recent annexation for a conservation subdivision, um, just south of west old Granco Road on the west side. Uh, each of them are undergoing, um, permits for single-family residential detached housing. Uh, utilities exist along Birch Bridge Road. The materials have been, um, submitted and approved by the city manager. So this is just our standard procedure in terms of following the process outlined in the, um, general code. Um, we are not recommending annexation for these properties. Any questions on this? Same theme, uh, these are three adjacent properties. Each are also pending residential building permits. Um, the blue line shows where the water line exists along MacArthur, and then the hatched green line shows that there is sewer running through the area. So again, staff has reviewed their requests, um, and we have recommended, uh, the utility connection. You cannot annex these properties because they are currently located closer to Elon's corporate limits. Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, these four properties, 2301, 2305, 2307, and 2309 are also for residential connections. Um, they are located off of Pinecroft Drive. Water and sewer exists along Pinecroft, uh, and they are only requesting at this time, uh, water services, excuse me, sewer services. Um, staff has reviewed their requests, uh, we are deferring, um, you're recommending, we are recommending referral of the annexation at this point, but, um, recommending the utility request.
So they're only recommending sewer?
They are only asked for sewer.
Oh, okay. How do we, how do we monitor that? Um, I know, how does that work?
So on, on sewer only, there's two options. We have a lump sum based on kind of the average usage, or, um, the resident can install a meter on their well and just build up the water use.
Now, what, um, what is most accurate or least worse to us? What does that matter?
The, the most accurate for what's deemed as such as a sewer would be a, a meter on the, on the well.
Um, do, do we have the ability to make that part of the rule?
I, I think we can, we can add that as a part.
That's a condition, yeah.
Um, and the reason I bring this up, I know in the past we've, we've lumped into a few where we had residents that were not in the city limits, but had sewer, did have water, and it's like, did we charge them for it? Did they know? Dave, you're laughing, but you know what I'm talking about. So, rather than create a problem down the road if we can get this one, but, uh, I'd be all for it if we can make that a condition. Everybody agree with that?
The first two will water into the right, can you?
Correct. Okay, and then lastly, there was a commercial utility request. This is, um, south of Graham in Alamance County. This is the Graham corporate limits, and then their ETJ, our corporate limits and our ETJ. So, um, we do have sewer that runs along Highway 87, a request came in. Uh, the property owner has received Alamance County Technical Review Committee approval for the freshwater auto repair shop. So even though there's no, we don't have any zoning, um, oversight or jurisdiction, um, the approval is based upon what the county has approved for that property. It is not contiguous, so we cannot recommend annexation. However, we are recommending the utility request.
So, with us not, so this is not in our ETJ, so we really don't have any influence over this whatsoever. So if this takes place and then this individual sells this place, it becomes something else in two years. And it's putting something in our system if we don't really control it.
I would imagine they would have to go back through Alamance County and the Technical Review Committee, um, if they're changing their use associated with the site.
Did we have county wise that?
No.
Um, but they did get TRC approval.
I understand this, yeah.
Could just not.
Yeah. I mean, that, that to me, I've heard this argument from staff, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but we looked at a project in Norfolk town that was asking commercial use, asking for water and sewer, and we said, no, because we were concerned about what went in our system.
I remember that one too, that was, um, on 87 as well.
That's right.
The, the issue, or the difference, I guess, between this one and that one would be, we would have to, they had absolutely no idea what they were doing, and so we were looking at it in terms of a worst-case scenario, and we have no jurisdiction over it, so it would be, um, difficult, impossible to control.
I mean, I, to me, I don't see this being any different. Maybe help me out if there's something wrong.
Yeah, I guess you do, but, uh, there you could turn around and try to time out my way of contract here, but, uh, as to use, but you're correct. Yet what you're basically doing is extending service beyond your, your control. And it has, that has some potential problems too.
If it ends in somebody else's jurisdiction, you're gonna have a problem now.
That's right.
You'd, you'd never be corrected.
That's right, that's true.
If they thought you were gonna not let them just house it, that's how I find it. We got no vote. We signed an agreement all day long, we can't change that. Of course, unless you get a house bill, like you said, sixty-five, that's, like that.
That's right.
But anyway, I, I, I don't see any cure for it. The only thing I can see is if the aggregate of it is, give them the, give them the service. But on the other hand, we have the whole dedication, we just write that all down. And then, you know, we hate, we put it on and deny, but that certainly, that certainly is.
So, in, in this case, we would require a meter, and so they have a, you know, five, they have a five per service. We would be using meters, so in that case, we could monitor the use. If there was a change, they would have to, um, assuming it's a new property, they would have to apply for service. So there, there's a few points where we might be able to catch, catch a change. There are other commercial properties connected to this that were, at least, there's a convenient store that last year was, was approved for connection further south. Um, this line, I believe, was extended originally, um, Southern Alamance High School and Southern Almanzt Middle School has a pump station, and their waste pumps up, boy, wouldn't it be rough, Southern High School Road up 87, and then ties into this gravel sewer.
The county acted, didn't it? Or did, did the county just pay?
I believe so.
Oh, no.
Or I, I came to the city, but I think that was.
Yeah, I think, I think it is. What was that about? County, county paid for the line, and, you know, we had, had this sort of deal with, you know, the, for a period of time, they put in the line and we tap on, and, and we, we, whatever the tap be, with a certain period of time, we give it back to the county because the county had paid for the line. But that was just, that was just all a sort of accommodate, you know, one year from the time that the line being in, you know, type of time you wanna tap in. So, if you remember the states, that's from a long time ago, so.
So is there a flip side about that? They're saying they get the changes to another business, and they may have to come back and ask us for permission to give them the...
Well, we have no jurisdiction, so that, that is a fluke. It's made a lot because of, because of, um, the permitting process with sewer, there is a process, being times something changes, for us to vet who it is and what's gonna be put to our system, and that sort of generated from the past. So, unless, except when, or they are, you're saying, you think that would give us some level of comfort?
But how? We just, we just spoke just briefly, if you have to continue this over, uh, we'd give an opportunity for us to take a look at it. They said by way of a contract, opportunity, one, regardless, standing on a regular basis. We would need to change, change of ownership, maybe we could turn around and get one time, or we could come back.
But, let's look at that, that variable, yeah. If we can do that, and it is, you know, that, I like that periodic monitor, and I can do it by contract. So, the deal here, there, I believe, was to be a pull list, bring it back, we'd have to look at it, and explore the possibility of doing it by contract, so to give a, you know, a little more, uh, probably a little more leverage here as far as, you know, keeping it, keeping it up with it and monitoring what's going on, but I think that'd be great.
Everybody agree with that? Shane, can you come out with that?
Yeah, I will reach out to the applicant and let them know, um, they were anxious to, to get this rolling. Um, and we'll talk internally about some potential conditions that, um, we can bring back to you.
Okay, so those first three we'll put on the, uh, on some our decision, and then end it up.
The big caveat is the electric fence has to be surrounded by another fence that is at least five feet tall. That second fence or the perimeter fence does have to go through whatever fence wall permitting standards you guys have in place. So you'll know that a security fence is coming. You have the authority to permit that secondary fence. There's signs for danger, high voltage, etc. So we can talk about this all you like, but this is session law, so this is stuff that we'll have to live with. Family care homes, we are increasing the number of kids from nine to 10. So if somebody wants to run a family care home in North Carolina, they can do up to 10 children now. 2024-49 clarified that triplexes and quadplexes that were over two stories in height could be, in fact, subject to design standards. So that's a step in the right direction. 2023-58 is a solar farm deconditioning plan. You guys have a solar farm, U Standard, I don't know if it will ever be used here in Burlington, but this session law establishes a DEQ, deconditioning plan requirement and a performance guarantee filed with the state for deconditioning of any utility scale solar facility. So we're just included that reference in these provisions. This is one that's relevant, and there's more coming on this front. 2024-49 places limitations on the city's ability to require paving or surfacing standards that exceed NC DOT's provisions, okay? Or that you can have a PE stamp and seal a plan for paving and surfacing provisions that don't meet NC DOT standards, you're going to have to accept them, okay? So parking lots, driveways, minimum NC DOT paving standards are the threshold that you have to live with unless a PE stamps something and says, even though this doesn't meet NC DOT standards, you Burlington have to accept it, okay? And that theme, that trend, is coming more and more and more. And if you guys want to talk about, we can talk about the driveways that that's coming shortly. 2023-63 is a farm sign exemption. NC DOT roadways, streets that are maintained by NC DOT, can have farm signs in the right of way during farm season. I don't know what farm season is, I'm not sure anybody does.
What's a farm sign?
What's a farm sign? It's a particular kind of a sign that advertises a farm who is selling or growing crops.
Strawberries.
Strawberries.
Yeah.
Blueberries.
Big tractor.
Whatever, whatever it is, as long as it falls under the definition of agriculture and the sign is on an NC DOT right of way, that sign can be there, not city right of way, okay? NC DOT right of way. 2024-49, preemption of the fire code, there's a big change in the fire codes coming out this summer, okay? One of the big changes is local governments are not going to be able to pick and choose which appendices they adopt, which appendices they don't, which code parts they adopt, which parts they don't. That's changing. There'll be a single fire code, everybody gets to adopt it, that's it, okay? Performance guarantees, 2024-49 adds new standards that basically require the city to conduct an inspection within 30 days that is requested, okay? Also, you need to, after the inspection, if everything passes, you need to issue a refund. You need to return the performance guarantee within 30 days of the inspection. Also, if the city inspects the feature, finds that the feature doesn't meet the city's minimum requirements, tells the applicant so, the applicant may choose to bring in a separate, private, professional engineer who, if they stamp or seal that whatever feature was completed in accordance with city standards, then you must accept it. Now, this hasn't been litigated yet, I assume it will be. Imagine a situation where somebody says, well Bob, I know this doesn't meet your standard, but my engineer says it does, so thank you very much, I'll take my money. And you'll say, well, no, I don't think so, I don't think you met the standard. And this session law preempt you, preempt the city. So I'm not sure what's going to happen in terms of litigation on this front. But this, again, trend of utilization of an outside professional engineer to accept a particular standard or configuration is a trend that we're seeing more and more and more of, and we'll be working on.
So can you imagine we were to run into something like that? Would, is, what would be the communication mechanism from staff to council? Hey, who got this issue?
Well, I guess I can take the stab and answer another question. Maybe others can act in. If it is, and he's correct me if I'm wrong. If it is a state session law that needs to be held to, there may not be a, as of right now, there does not appear to be a requirement to inform anyone based on the changes. I would say that it's probably in staff's best interest where there are disparities to make the manager aware so that we will understand what our liability is associated with that.
Because this is going to get exploited.
Yes.
This one here reeks of somebody who's going to come in and just work this ad nauseam until something changes.
Until litigation, yes.
Yeah, so from my standpoint, if we're seeing this as staff, well, we believe that something was not done up to what our requirements were, but someone stamps it and says it is, I want to know about it because I'm going to get in the car and drive to the garage and say, are you all aware that this is what this is now starting to look like?
Chair, Bob and I just spoke, just briefly there, so is there any liability on the part of the PE?
Yes, the liability transfers from the city to the PE who stamps or seals the document saying that the minimum standard is met.
Oh, that's going to discourage the...
Yes.
Okay. That's a theory, first, you know?
Yes.
You hope that...
Yeah.
I think it's an open question. Let's say a PE certified something five years in the past, everything's fine, then that PE goes bankrupt or something happens, and then you've got what is essentially ticking time bombs out in your community that didn't meet your standard, got approved anyway, the person who was on the hook for it is now bankrupt or gone or whatever. How does that liability chain work over time? I don't know. It's one of the central problems with privatizing responsibility for building inspection.
So what you're really doing is taking the performance guarantee that the owners had to pull up and letting the PE come in and stamp it, and that liability rolls over to the PE?
Essentially, yes. Now, the work does have to take place. You can't simply say, oh, well, I'm not going to, you know, complete this feature. But the real issue, the real problem is, you know, the threshold for, the responsibility that the city has enjoyed prior to this session law, the ability to approve or disprove that installation is now being given over to a private party.
So other than just kind of a trend down in the legislature, is there anything in particular that cities have been doing or one or more cities have been doing that has drawn this scrutiny on the part of the legislature?
I'm sure that there is. You know, we have 700 local governments across the state, there's a strong appetite on Jones Street for increased privatization, decreased local government autonomy. Wouldn't surprise me for a minute to hear that some jurisdiction somewhere has been not approving some applicant's installations, and that applicant's got frustrated and made a telephone call to whomever, resulting in legislation, etc., and that that's, you know, in New York.
The issue's going to be developer A comes to us and says, glad y'all made me do it this way, and developer B didn't have to. That's what's going to happen.
They're all going to be going to the same PE, eventually.
This could get very difficult.
Yes, oh yes, and this is, my friends, this is only the beginning. It's only the beginning of where we're going.
That's why I was wanting some sort of communication mechanism, because I think we need to be involved in this in some way.
Absolutely. We sent something from Metro Mayor's today for City Council to consider as well, some top of the points, that we need to top our delegation by. One other thing I'll mention, the last thing on this slide, is that our stormwater control measure maintenance amounts were currently set at 25, they could reduce to 10, okay? So further, if you've been collecting stormwater control measure maintenance amounts and someone asks you for a refund, you must refund. Now, the owner is the party who holds the performance guarantee. You can ask for evidence that the performance guarantee funds are available, in place, available and accessible to you, but you can no longer hold the money.
We don't do that anymore.
There's lots of local governmental duty, but as good as you don't, you don't have to undo that. Okay, so that's our session law for '23, '24. Okay, so that brings us current through January, December 31, 2024. Okay. Couple of other changes to some standards. We are, and these are derived primarily from staff who's been administering the regulations and has, you know, sort of continued tweaking and refining as we go, allowing a type C buffer between active recreation and residential on another lot. We currently require 50 feet, there's sort of a request to make that a little bit more flexible, you can still do 50 feet or you can do a type C landscaping buffer, okay? So we're trying to be more efficient in screening this adjacent residential development from whatever private onsite recreation facilities might go in. So you can still do the 50 feet or you can do a type C, which is less than 50 feet, but landscaped. Fencing, couple of things here. There's been a desire to accommodate fencing without a principal use. If somebody is using a lot on a temporary basis for storage, or getting ready to do construction, or as an interim stopgap sort of issue, they want to have something on the site, being able to fence that. So there's been a request that that be added. Clarifying the standards for fence heights on lots of record, no change to the rules at all, just recognizing that lots of record have slightly more flexible fence height requirements of side yards. Thirdly, and important for our discussion, are alternatives to finish side. And this was something that has been discussed already by council, it's been a couple of years. We, as you may recall...
That's taken off the fencing rule.
Yes. You may recall that this is something that we've talked about quite a bit. We continue to struggle with the finished side facing the street requirement. Given large lots, given things located between the fence and the street, given the proximity of fences on adjacent properties, and the inability to get to the fence to turn the boards around or to maintain it for these reasons, there's been some suggestion about softening these standards, allowing larger lots where fences are farther from the street to deviate from the fencing requirements, whether that is via a landscaping screen alternative, or just a large lot where the fence is farther from the street. And those are the basics of the suggested change. This is similar in nature to what came before you guys a few years ago. And so, you know, this is essentially on page 474 of your packet if you're interested in learning a little bit more about what we're suggesting, but...
Well, obviously, we talked about break links the last time this came up.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying that we can put a provision in there that requires landscaping?
What we would suggest is, you know, if you have a fence that is one that would need to be, have its finish side facing the street, in other words, it's of a certain height, more than three feet, it's within a certain distance from the street, 20, 25 feet, that you could, as an alternative to turning the fence or having a particular fence screened in a particular way, you could use landscaping instead. And that landscaping would consist of evergreen shrubs between the fence and the street, you know, with a minimum, a minimum maintain height of 36 inches, 36 inches on the center. And that run for the full run of the fence of the wall. So that's the intention. And I'll be honest with you, this is as much to ease code enforcement as it is to be a help for folks who want to have privacy fences on lots that, you know, have street frontages. It's just been a real challenge for code enforcement to administer.
Big installers are just getting ahead of us and we're going out, and we're having to confront...
Yes.
Even though there's a permitting requirement.
Yes, that's correct.
Where's the team today?
You just, you just got it right there. You've got people that are installing fences, that putting burden back on the owner, program and comply, and give the permits. Well, I will tell you that installing the fences, especially one I picture right there, has got very, very expensive. I had to replace a gate in my backyard at $500. So, and my point is, that's, that's an investment right there.
With landscaping?
So that would be the option. You still, the way that it was drafted is, you can put the finish side facing the street or you can put landscaping. That was the, that's the compromise that we would suggest. Okay. Couple other changes to the standards. Clarification, when you've got required landscaping that crosses lot lines, it should be an easement, great catch, should have been in there all along. So that's a good addition. We have requirements for commercial buildings, they have front facade requirements that they have to meet. We have, as one of those options, a green wall, and nobody's used it. And we think that's because the 40% threshold is too expensive. So we'd like to experiment, lower the percentage, and see if this encourages people to utilize this green wall design. So this is a wall that has living plants on it that you're watering and maintaining over time as a, as a design provision. Signage, as you know, we have some limits on signs that move or appear to move. We also exempt signs on vehicles. So we now have people putting signs that move on vehicles. And so, we are closing down on that by barring flags that move from being on vehicles.
Give us an example.
I might put a flag on my parked car, or I might put pennants or feather flags on my stationary vehicle that I, that has my business sign on it, that I park out in front because it's an extra sign, that we don't regulate because people drive their vehicles to and from work, you know, for personal purposes. So this is the situation. We've seen people abusing the limitations on moving sign provisions by using their vehicles.
So, I mean, does this get up against First Amendment?
No, this is not somebody who has an American flag on their car. This is a stationary vehicle that's parked with a sign on it. Now, it's a more difficult question if that, if that sign is a flag from Chad's exterminators, that's an interesting question for us because we can't look at the flag necessarily, what it says. But, you know, the intention here was to stop the abuse of the vehicle signage.
So we had, we had an issue where people would park their vans with decals at a bank that says they were real estate agents.
Right. And so this would be, I parked my van at a bank, and I've got my real estate signed decal, and I've got a big flag that I've planted on the roof, or I've put pennants on it that wave in the wind, or I've got the air blown sock guy, I'm sorry, I had to use a technical term, but, you know, attention to getting devices that move being stationed on vehicles.
Sounds like a taken on card.
I guess the issue is, property owners are like, well, you let Chad do it, why can't I do it? Right? There's, you know, he's already doing it, well, Jamie's doing it, right? But, so why can't I? And I think that's the issue that code enforcement is raising with this, with this. So we're trying to manage the moving signs without chipping down, you know, in a, in a big way on vehicle signage, if that makes sense.
Not targeting anyone specific?
No.
Do we have overriding issues with this specific type of issue?
No, but I would also say, and I can get more information about this too, but I could imagine a scenario where a vehicle is parked in the right of way, the person may not know where the right of way line is, and now it's distracting motorists, or it's impeding on sight distance triangles, things along that nature. So that would be another way to regulate that.
Forward all calls to Jamie.
What's that?
Forward all calls to Jamie.
We're suggesting softening the supplemental sign standards on construction sites. If you're doing construction, you need more supplemental signs, no problem. Once construction's over, then we can apply rules, put it on the next slide. We're talking about increasing the maximum allowable lighting height for industrial sites that are 75 acres in size, growing the minimum lighting height from 30 to 50. Trying to recognize some larger industrial developments that are coming in. Shade trees, recognizing tree root zones as active and urban, open space set aside. We're trying to encourage and incentivize tree protection by recognizing areas of tree protection towards recreation requirements. Also, some sustainability incentives for trees that are located along greenways or paths. So you get some incentive bonuses for trying to keep those trees. Again, just trying to encourage people to do a better job of tree protection.
And I'll just add, in case you aren't aware, if you are meeting the sustainability sign requirements, a developer could get increased heights, they could get increased density, they can get parking reductions. So there's a lot of different things that developers can take advantage of in order to get some relief.
Right. Okay, that's it for the standards, okay? The rest of the stuff's fairly straightforward. We've got, we have, you know, continuing findings, small typos here and there, just clarifying what the language says today, things like effective dates, auto sales and/or rental, not just or rental, ADUs need a street, you need street address, etc. So just kind of practical provisions. Your fire department has come forward and said, we'd like to have some more standardized fire, functional fire protection provisions for these non-conventional residential neighborhoods, the bundle of points of pocket neighborhoods, so they're seeking shorter fire hydrant distances and wider streets. Transportation Director, so Mr. Gomes, will be determining unlisted, parking standards for unlisted uses. We've kind of made the chair, vice chair language uniform across your various pointed bodies and clarified that TRC is reviewing site names. So a couple of, there's not too much going on here, this is pretty innocuous stuff. This, on the other hand, is something that we wanted to raise your attention. There are two additional use types that are being suggested for addition to the UDO. The first of them, I think we're potentially pulling these. These standards have generated a lot of discussion, so a lot of discussion, planning board about outdoor and indoor shooting ranges. Your current city code does not permit commercial gun range facilities, okay? So if you were to do something like this, it would require amendments to your city code. So you'll also note that outdoor shooting ranges are currently listed as prohibited uses in the UDO. So some substantial change to our gun provisions. We would suggest we not include this. That's, I've continued to go back and talk to and work with entities in the city that are calling for this and...
What entities are calling for it?
I, I'm gonna, this was something that staff flagged for me, so I'm not sure.
I mean, obviously, it made our agenda tonight, but you're telling us you don't want to do it. So what, how did this make your agenda?
We had, we had some inquiries in terms of where we would or wouldn't allow for shooting ranges, and we determined that we were going to craft some language that would allow for a facility with very tight restrictive conditions associated with that, where the, where the use would only be allowed through in the zoning process as well. It's also come to our attention that...
The city code doesn't allow that.
Correct.
You're talking about the UDO here, the city code doesn't allow it. So if we're going to need to sync them up, that's where you're going to go.
So we're just, we're just recommending to pull this entirely at this point, and come back if we have additional modifications.
We have a lot of discussion, and you're planning, members of your planning zoning commission pulled pretty strongly. The standards that we proposed were fairly strict, fairly rigorous, and there were a lot of concerns expressed about those rigorous standards from certain members of your planning zoning commission.
So this is, we could expect this to come up next time?
We will, we will be reviewing what we have here, and I think more importantly, the question would be, reviewing what the city attorney could determine whether or not we want to break a recommendation for the city code to be amended in conjunction with that. So I think we have to weigh the pros and cons and also get the involvement of police department and other folks to give us some insight.
These would be commercial, these are not police facilities, these are, are not institutional jurisdictional provisions, these are commercial uses.
It's not allowed in the current city code, or police can utilize these or other, or other, or...
Last slide is outdoor storage uses could include a portion of the site set aside for retail sales. So you might have an outdoor storage use that doesn't have a building, but that might be involved in retail sales. So imagine somebody who's selling steel, or somebody who's selling, you know, or who is storing some kind of large volume commodity, who might, might have some available for sale. We're suggesting that outdoor storage as a principal use be permitted to have outdoor storage at retail sale as an accessory to it, subject to the limitations, how big the area of retail sales can be, the fact that it has to be screened, etc., all of the things that we could normally apply to anybody wanting to do retail sales in an outdoor storage area. Those are the changes. As, wait a minute, it's like, back one, back one more? We went to planning work with these changes. We went to planning board with these changes, unanimous approval, with the comments that we mentioned earlier about outdoor shooting ranges. So what we would ask for tonight, one more, is if you guys want to talk that we would take this to the May sixth public hearing, not including the indoor and outdoor shooting ranges. And I also wanted to say, before we wrap up, we are also working on a transitional housing tax amendment. We would anticipate that to be before you, June, July. We're working with staff. We're working with the attorney's office, special use permit, new standard, et cetera. So that's underway, and I'll, I'll attempt to answer any questions.
Just one quick question. The painting standards are gonna be reduced to whatever somebody's asking. That's got probably nothing to do with the street requirements? If it was a private subdivision, it would be, things would still be, still to all D O T standards?
Yes. However, there are, I know your staff has been keeping up with the list. There are twenty-five or so very, very impactful bills that are moving through the cycle. One of those bars you from adopting street standards that are more restrictive than N C D O T in any instance, and bars you from applying more restrictive standards to private streets than N C D O T standards. And so, I, you know, if you want to talk about any of the pending legislation, that's fine. I know you guys are up with it. I will say, I have never seen a list of more impactful legislation in the eleven years that I've been watching. It is truly profound. Up to and including removal of your liability protections. Your individual protections as an elected official.
A appointed lawyer also.
A appointed lawyer also. I served as Board of Adjustment Chair in Durham, and I'm gonna be having-
I'll have a tender letter, D Day.
Some people do. Very, very scary. Very scary. To be, to be personally liable as an elected official is truly stunning.
Well, what would be truly stunning is, you may not be able to get personal insurance if you were an elected official, because they might not want to be allowing you.
Right. Right. And so it doesn't bode well-
And that could be horrible. That could be home.
Doesn't bode well for leadership at the local government level or volunteerism.
And how did that discussion begin? I mean, the ramifications of that would be substantial.
There is a move, I'm speculating, I don't live inside these elected, these representatives' brains, there's a move to curtail local government land use regulation, right? Just generally across the board in every quarter. For instance, two days ago was, was issued a new bill by Representative Brody that forces courts to award ten times the requested damage if, if an elected official is found to have acted with malfeasance, violated the general statutes, acted inappropriately. That is household nine thirteen liability unfair deceptive development actions. The judge has to award ten times the requested damages to a such point of, if it's found during an original civil action that the elected official or the appointed official acted with malfeasance or acted outside of the confines of the law. This coupled with seven sixty-five's retraction of police power, coupled with all of this private inspector and private engineer stuff, coupled with the removal of the building code council, the residential building code council under a new Department of Labor Department that's gonna oversee all building regulation in North Carolina. A fire marshal will no longer have control over building permit if this bill passes. You're moving towards a state unified development ordinance. That statutes will be the rules, and there will be no local development regulations anymore.
Abuse of power or perceived abuse of power by municipal governments, was that what you said?
Yes. Trouble in the courts.
So to follow up that, as far as my updates, well, there was a discussion earlier about maybe getting something in writing to our delegation, questioning some of these land use bills. Is that something council would like us to do?
I would.
I would?
Yeah, I've been over some of that topic. I think that, I say, it's scary. It really is. It's worse than I've ever seen. I've been visiting over fifty years.
I, I'm not even, I'm just, I'm just scratching the start. There's twenty-five of these. Anyway, did we, is May sixth acceptable for?
Thank you very much.
And Peggy, you want to add something she wanted to mention?
I just want to make sure that council is okay with, I'm gonna speak with our bond council tomorrow. Previously, at your last meeting, passed a resolution for seventeen recreation and sixteen and a half streets. And I don't know if we'll need to change that to just sixteen and a half streets, but if our bond council feels like we need to do so, I want to make sure that council is okay with us adding an item to the consent agenda of tomorrow not to do so.
Do you do your, by approval, right?
Yes, just changing the amount.
And the other thing I would like to ask, and I put it in my weekly update on Friday, possibility of changing the May fourth session to May twenty-first, if that is agreeable with council? That is over?
May nineteen.
May twenty.
May nineteen, I cannot, I cannot.
What's the date?
May one.
We looked at the week.
Chad had the Monday, the nineteenth, the twenty-first on the meeting.
Yes.
It's currently scheduled for May fifth. So you're gonna have a city council meeting on the twentieth, and then a work session, and then Wednesday?
You have it on Monday or on Wednesday?
Right. It, that allows us with some changes that we're looking at for budget, that we can get budget wrapped up and submitted. It may be a little difficult to do that in two weeks, but this would give us time to make sure we get everything straight.
Let me make sure I got P I again.
May twenty-first, moving it to the Wednesday. That's the Wednesday after the second, I'll tell you. And that's, okay, we'll pull out that as considered as change of the calendar.
Is it for the manager's budget, or?
Yes. And that's a lot.
Got the board in the block.
Anything else?
Thank you for your questions.
No, I'm all these things. If there's nothing else, then we will stand in judgment.